September 16 county council meeting has now been called to order. And councilmember Love's absence, councilmember Bump Ruddy will give the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
I stand. Dear Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together once again. We ask that you continue to watch over us, bless us and lead us, and bless us with your guidance. We ask that you watch over our servicemen and women and say, protect us, keep us safe from all hurt, harm and danger. Forgive us the wisdom to make the best decision for our community and for our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. As I call your name, would you please come to the front? Alicia Muldro, Dale Dove, Paul Watts, John Bramblett, Karen Hedrick, Faith Thunderberg, Michael Geddings, Manning Kimmel, Pickens Freeman, Matt Velkovich, Beth White, James Fatula, David Dixon, Raymond Weber, Jeff Hunter and Janice Carlisle.
Good evening. I am proud to be ministering the oath of office for our committee members. As some of you may know, council members, if you're being back with an oath and if you approach, you can remember, it's an honor and privilege to administer the oath on behalf of York County. Thank you all very much. If you need to raise your right hand and repeat after me. If you solemnly swear, then you are qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office which I've been appointed and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof and preserve, protect and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States. Thank you. I'll leave first.
Thank you for serving. Thank you for serving. Thank you for serving. Robert Winkler, thank you for serving. Thank you for serving, sir. Thank you for serving. Hey, Beth? Thank you for serving, Lord. Robert Winkler, thank you for serving. Robert Winkler, thank you for serving. Hey, man? I'm good, how are you?
See, you say that to everybody.
He didn't tell me he was not. I was his favorite.
with York County. Would Sergeant Clinton please come forward?
Several times a year, I'm asked to come down here and give away a plaque or a clock. And I have to be honest, I typically shake somebody's hand and I thank them for their service and just because of our role, I don't often haven't interacted with a person. I've not interacted with Sergeant Clinton. But I stand here, and I say this not lightly, at the foot of a hero. You and all of your brothers are heroes for everything you all do. And I can't thank you enough for your service to York County for all these years. And I'm gonna let the sheriff, who knows you as well as anyone, give us the rest. On behalf of York County and the council, thank you very much, sir.
Well, I won't be long, because as you can tell, Randy loves this attention here. Very self-confident guy. You know, thank you, first of all, council, for the recognition of Randy's 35 years of service to the county and this community. I think it's important. There are not enough awards and enough recognitions to repay and recognize what Randy has done for this community and this region, and really this country. He has trained officers from all around the world in the techniques that he has been trained on and learned and developed. And there is not a single person in this county that knows the woods of this county like Randy Clinton. He can tell you, if you ask him about a particular call, he'll tell you what creek, what bend in the creek that went over and where the suspect turned back around and where they ended up catching him and then who, what officer his dog bit, right Randy?
Yes, sir.
Randy, we spoke many, many times over the years, and as I became sheriff, we talked about how fortunate Randy and his team was and how many dangerous individuals that they pursued and caught in the interest of public safety. And we were, knock on wood, God was with us and blessed us and even blessed us on January 16th in 2018. And Randy, we cannot say enough about what you mean to the sheriff's office. You know you're always family. Obviously, this council has a lot of appreciation for what you have done and what our office does for the community, and you can't be thanked enough. And we certainly, certainly do appreciate that those folks stood up because you're well deserving of that and many more honors. And thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you for having the privilege of working all these years here.
Remind everyone, as you come up to speak, please give your name, address, and remember that you have two minutes. At the end of two minutes, I am going to have to cut you off. Don Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, staff, guests and heroes from the Sheriff's Department. I've spoken to this body before on behalf of veterans and the United States commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. Today, I want to bring to your attention that in October, the wall that heals, the replica wall is coming to Rock Hill. I'm sure you're all aware of it, but I wanted to get it on the record tonight. The wall that heals is a three-quarter scale replica of the Vietnam War Memorial in Washington, DC. The Vietnam War Memorial Fund is bringing this treasure to Rock Hill. It will be displayed at the BMX Park in Rock Hill. It will arrive here on Tuesday, the 22nd. The motorcade will come in. There will be a motorcycle escort by many of the veterans, but any motorcyclist can ride to escort the wall, but combat veterans will be in front of the motorcade and all other veterans and other riders will be behind. After a brief opening ceremony, the wall will be open for viewing to the public around the clock from 2:00 on Wednesday afternoon until 2:00 on Sunday afternoon. Saturday morning, there will be an honors ceremony. The keynote speaker is Lieutenant General Paul Blackwell, who commanded troops in Vietnam. We tentatively also will have Major General Jackson, Jim Jackson, who is the director of the Vietnam Commemoration in Washington, DC. The focus, obviously, of this visit is those killed in action, but there will also be a focus on those missing in action, those who served during the Vietnam period and the families of service members who served, who are missing or who survived. It will be staffed by volunteers around the clock, so it's quite a community effort. I have some posters that I'd like to give to the council members, or I'll give them to Karen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. CWSN.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm CWSN, 520 West Mount Gallant Road, York, South Carolina. What I wanted to speak to you about is item 28 in your consent agenda. I would hope you would remove it from your consent agenda. I'm not sure in reading this how much agricultural input you, the county, has gotten on the solar farms. If I look at item K1 Charlie, it says the county may request a new engineer's estimate of probable cost of decommissioning. I think that should say you shall request every five years an update on decommissioning cost. In K2 Charlie, it says you only gotta take anything out of the ground that's down to 36 inches. I think they put it in the ground. They need to take it out. If it's 10 feet, let them, make them take it out in restoration. In item F, if you're the landowner and you lease your property, you're the one who bears the ultimate responsibility of restoring it to the initial condition. I think the leaser ought to bear the ultimate responsibility of restoring it to the initial condition. My concern is if I lease my property to someone and they go bankrupt, I'm left holding the bag. Well, they say we won't go bankrupt. Check out the latest pharmaceuticals. The other area that I've got is, once you cover all these land, this land with solar farms, I mean, your medicine's already coming from China. You want your food to come from China, too? You need to think about that. I don't know that you've had much agricultural input into this document, and I think you really need to reach out to Farm Bureau, Soil Conservation District and get farmers' input into it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, consent item number 27 has been deferred until the first meeting in October. Are there any other requests to remove any item from the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to remove item 28 from consent.
Item number 28 has been removed from consent and will be placed under old business Do we have a motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. We have no public hearings. Under old business, I have recused myself and will be giving a letter to the clerk.
Matter number one, in old business rezoning action, consider third reading, case number 1912, tax map number 72800007, 41 and 48, zoning request to rezone from AGC and RUD to RC2 for 9.862 acres, Council District 1. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'll just, Councilmember Cox raised some questions about this one and some concerns last time we had the vote. And staff has addressed most of those, or else the, for me at least, or the applicant has addressed them, and I know the county's working to alleviate some of that, and they've reached out to the railroad and others. So I am more comfortable than I was last reading, so I will, that's why I seconded the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. No. Motion carries four, two, one.
We're now on old business number two, which is consent 28, for those following along at home. Counsel to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 zoning code, so as to provide for solar energy facilities, to provide for regulatory provisions related thereto, to amend the definition and use table in order to establish the uses and provide for the districts in which they are allowed, to establish solar energy facilities, as special exceptions in AGC and AGC1, to amend the supplemental regulation subchapter in order to address items such as setbacks, height, buffer yards and screening, lighting, glare, environmental impacts, aviation impacts, slight restoration, facility abandonment and decommission, and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Trying to decide whether I want to make the motion to defer it at this point. I think I would actually like to, did we get any input from any of the?
Can we have a motion before we have any discussion?
All right, then I'll make the motion to defer, to give staff time to have a meeting with some of our farmers and stuff to get input.
There's a motion, there's a second. Mr. Hudspeth has, what, has this been screened through our agriculture community?
We had a number of meetings with, well, we had our standard meetings, which are public hearings in the course of approving an ordinance, getting a recommendation from planning commission. We also met and worked with the providers of the solar farm from the industry to work through the ordinance. I do not think there was any direct connection with the agricultural community, other than what they're, they're working with, the vendors.
Certainly. The motion is to defer for how long?
The motion was to defer until staff could have time to put together a meeting with them, so 30 days?
And everyone kind of seconded it. Who did you have as the second, Karen? Britt, do you agree with that? All right, so it'll come back in 30 days. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. New business, counsel to adopt a proclamation in recognition of the 30th anniversary of the York County 911 system. I will try to read this for you. I don't remember Dr. Blackwell reading things like this all the time. Whereas, on this 30th anniversary of 911 services in York County, we should be reminded that our citizens are served each and every day by a dedicated and loyal Department of Public Safety Communications 911 staff, working tirelessly in the performance of their public charge. This September 2019 marks the 30th anniversary of 911 services in York County, South Carolina, which started as an idea for a new technology network to enhance public safety in 1982 and remained a work in progress until its completion in 1989. Whereas, there were pioneers whom recognized this new technology was needed to provide a single answering point to receive phone calls and dispatch police, fire and medical transport in our county to work in tandem with an improved addressing system, addressing system which coordinated parcels of land to each phone in the county. While testing the new 911 phone system, an immediate challenge presented itself on September 22nd, 1989, when Hurricane Hugo fell upon South Carolina and turned the county's line by line testing of the system into a real-time emergency for the new system, which held true and flawlessly handled 23,000 calls in one week for an anticipated 40,000 calls per year. In January 2009, communication efforts were consolidated to serve 18 fire departments, eight EMS and rescue organizations and the York County Sheriff's Office in a single-point dispatch system in what was titled the Department of Public Safety Communications. Throughout the ensuing years, various other agencies have been added to the dispatch center, which is proud to have received and dispatched over 410,800 calls in the year 2018 alone in service to our public. And whereas, without these public servants, our community would face greater challenges in the dispatch of its first responders, where each employee is a lifeline to those we serve. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the York County Council in a meeting duly assembled that during the month of September 2019, we should honor our Department of Public Safety Communications for its 30 years of uninterrupted public service to the citizens of the county and take pride in the department's efforts, contributions and accomplishments. Adopted this 16th day of September 2019. Any discussion? Oh, I think I need a motion, actually.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Committee and other reports, I don't believe there were any.
Public Safety Committee Meeting 6. Hackle still available, right? That will be? Okay.
Are there any council member new non-agenda comments?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make one.
Mr. Winkler.
Just like to remind everyone, most of the council members sitting up here probably head out east Liberty Street when you leave here each evening after one of our council meetings. Just as you pass the library, on the left is our new veterans park that we put in. Just in the last few weeks, engineering has gotten the sidewalks in, the concrete part of the sidewalks around through there. It's looking really nice, and hopefully this week, they're gonna start placing memorial bricks. I believe the veterans and the Veterans Association has already sold about 34, 36 memorial bricks. And so there's still plenty, if anyone wants to honor or memorialize anyone in your family who served, you know, that, the process of, it's a beautiful park already, but it's in the process of becoming a much more beautiful one, and there's opportunity there to honor members of your family or friends who have served our country, so be sure and look to the left when you go by there tonight.
Yeah, so on the, in the early morning hours of September 5th, we lost a man who also gave his career and then some to honoring and helping the people of this county. Charles Dunlap was killed in a head-on car crash in Highway 5, and I think we should honor him today with a moment of silence real quick. And also, you know, Highway 5 is, happens to be one of the more dangerous stretches of road in this county, and I hope that this brings attention to the matter and that in the near future, we can address that problem. And I would stand here now and say that we should dedicate that stretch of road to Charles and come to play renaming it after him if we're able to do that. So if y'all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Blackwell?
If y'all remember, at the last meeting, I requested the cost so we could use the monitors here on a more usable basis and have the agenda pulled up, switch, just switch the window to pull up presentations. And per Karen, it costs us for these seven computers $4,000. So I would ask the council members to give the affirmative or the negative, but I think it's for us to have these, we might as well use them. And we don't have to log that much paper, we can just pull it up on.
I agree.
Anyone else? Any other thing? Citizen Concerns. Paul.
Paul Endroch, Rock Hill, South Carolina, President of the Reaganites. I was waiting to be here at 8:30, 9 o'clock, eating popcorn, waiting for the, for the show up. This is great. I get to go home and watch a football game like you guys. But anyways, I'm here, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I do have a major issue I would like to talk about, and I am here as a York County taxpayer and our First Amendment of our Constitution, which you all sworn to uphold, I just heard that swearing in today, and to defend the Constitution. The First Amendment to the United States Constitution prevents the government from making laws which respect an establishment of religion prohibits the free exercise of religion. I noticed tonight on your executive session, you're gonna, you already talked about Morning Star, or you will be talking about Morning Star Ministry, so this is perfect timing today. Morning Star Ministries should have the right to finish their tower, to build a retirement center. It is the prop, it is their property, it is owned by a religious organization. I believe that's why you do have lawsuits against the county. The Reaganites and quite a few of us I've talked to, we are appalled that the county has already spent $300,000 in legal fees, not allowing the church to build on their own property. That alone, I believe, is wrong. I believe that $300,000, and it's gonna keep growing and growing. I know you all are good stewards of our taxpayers' money and have campaigned as watt dogs of our taxpayers' money, and you're all fiscal conservatives on this, and I'm proud of all of you for being that way, watching the money of your county. And I know, you know, Kevin has saved us a lot of money this, over the year, you know, since he's taken over, and you have frowned his leadership. I'm proud of you. But as I said, there are three lawsuits filed against York County that are not allowing Morning Star to build. My question is, how much more taxpayers' money will be spent? Another $100,000? $200,000? $300,000? It gets ugly when you go to Supreme Court and the dollars, the lawyers love to bill you, go ka-ching, ka-ching. And I know as, you know, with a couple lawyers, three lawyers up there now, you know what billings could be like. If we did not have all this money, we could hire more policemen, have more fire department personnel, and maybe fix a few potholes in the city, in the county. There has been ugly and bigoted emails sent by the past county council members, which likely none of you were ever involved in, and a county manager who was bigoted against Morning Star Ministry, which he's no longer here, thank God. Morning Star has made every effort to get this resolved and was rebuffed in every turn. And since only, I think Britt and somebody else, Michael, you might have been on the council for a while, but, you know, they went to med-
Mediation.
Mediation. Sorry, I need some water there. Asked for a permit to clean up the building. The county council rejected mediation, which, you know, when the, when the both sides agree to something, then the council votes it unanimously down. I mean, that was a lot of time spent, and I would just wish I was out of fly on the wall to hear why that wasn't accepted. And the rejection by the planning commission to clean up the building was also rejected. So looking through the newspapers, I did see one thing. Morgan Francis at Fox 48 was wondering whose fault is this? And she asked Rick Joyner, who is the principal at Morning Star, he goes, well, it's the county's fault. It's your county's fault. And the county argues Morning Star Ministry never secured financing. It's their fault. So a lot of people just say this is a bunch of attorneys going back and forth. And as I said before, it's ka-ching, ka-ching. You know, the county's paying for it. With this being said, how do we move on to save taxpayers' money? The building is structurally sound. It was built to a high standard, and I don't know when the county has been in there last to look at it themselves to see if it's structurally sound, but Morning Star has been in there and is structurally- has been in there and is structurally sound. We believe it is time to give Morning Star, Morning Star Ministries, a visible path to resolve this injustice. Give them a path to get this built, or the county continues to spend money. And it's my money, it's your money, it's all these people's money to be spent. But I do have an idea of a solution, and we would like to propose that Morning Star bring a building permit to the table. And the county council works with Morning Star on the permit. Upon agreeing the pass, the building permit for Morning Star, and the county drops whatever other items they have against Morning Star, Morning Star will drop the lawsuit, the three lawsuits. This is one simple solution. I know it's not really simple, but it's an avenue. And I don't believe anybody, especially the council members, have talked to Morning Star because your lawyer says, don't talk to him, it's under litigation. But you know what? When it gets to a million dollars someday, you'll be going, oh, look at Paul, I remember Paul talking about this little incident. So there is a conclusion coming up, so we're lucky here. I am appalled at $300,000 be spent, and I got that from the county, and, and there's no insight, end in sight of our money. So I'd like to ask Michael Sherman or Christie Cox, since you're the management up there, to meet with Rick Joyner, a Morning Star, and try to work out an agreement. Give him a path. Our lawyer's not going to give him a path. He's going to defend it to his death, the lawsuits. But all we're going to do is continue to spend money, and, you know, that building is going to sit there and sit there. You know, it goes to Supreme Court. How many years does it take? It could take many, many years. So I ask our elected leaders to talk about it among yourselves. See what you could do. Let's find a way to resolve this disagreement, and I agree, it's a disagreement on both sides. I'm not here saying Morning Star is, is not at fault. Maybe they've done some things wrong, but I know for sure, when I've seen a lot of those emails about the county, they weren't very pretty what the chairman, you know, the county chairman said about it, calling them a cult and other things. It was not pretty. So I'm hoping that you will find a way to resolve this and that all parties can move on, and I appreciate you doing something, and thank you very much, and you guys have a good week, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, sir. Let me get more breath here. Move to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice on condemnation project number 11149-004, tract 89. Receipt of legal advice on condemnation project number 11149-004, tract 162. Receipt of legal advice condemnation of Penny's project 11149-010, tract 38. Receipt of legal advice on Morning Star litigation update. Contractual matter of Project Avalanche. Receipt of legal advice and consider association of attorney Kirsten Small. A contractual matter, legal advice, consider waiver request for Project Tom Sawyer. A contractual matter, consider Ginty Court speculative buildings due diligence extension. And a contractual matter and considering resolution request of First Citizens Bank and Trust Company.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will go immediately into executive session. The council has exited executive session. Are there any motions?
Yes, sir. Motion to authorize condemnation of project number 11149-004, tract 89.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
All right. Motion to authorize condemnation of project number 11149-004, tract 162.
Still need a second. There we go. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Next motion.
Motion to authorize condemnation of Penny's project 11149-010, tract 38.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes.
Motion to approve association of attorney Kirsten, Kirsten Small, excuse me.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes.
Motion to approve conflict waiver request for Project Tom Sawyer.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes.
Motion to approve and ratify Ginty Court speculative buildings due diligence extension.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes.
And finally, motion to sign resolution document of First Citizens Bank and Trust Company.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes.
Hope to adjourn.
There's a motion adjourned, second. We are adjourned.